Good morning. It is Wednesday, May 10th, 2017 at nine o'clock and we're here at Courthouse Square, Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. Start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christie, has anyone signed up to speak this morning? No? All right, they missed that great opportunity, so we'll go right into two presentations. The first is under Economic Development, it's Grow EDC, a third quarter report, and Allison McKenzie is here. Good morning. I see you everywhere, just so you know that.
I see you everywhere.
Fine.
Thank you. So, good morning. I'm going to hit most of the highlights and some of the statistics from the first quarter and then if you have of this year, and then if you have other questions, we can talk more in depth about that. So, in the first quarter of this year, we met with 73 individual people who came to us for consulting services. Eighteen of those were new to us, that's a lot of new people for us to have in one quarter. And the primary reason for that is that we have a lot of folks interested in getting involved in tourism and the eclipse. That's what was going on with that. And we had a lot more individual counseling sessions as a result. Snow and ice interfered with some of our normal classes, so we only had five learning events in this first quarter, with 43 in attendance and 29 different participants. And then we separated out our tourism meetings. We had, in the first three months of the year, five separate tourism meetings. That doesn't count the stuff we were doing online or some of the folks who participated in other events, like the inter-agency meeting that Travel Salem had. So, we had 28 individuals participating in those meetings, and that's about right. We have about 30 people working on tourism things right now. So, a year ago, we were just finishing our Rural Tourism Studio Accelerator with Travel Oregon. We had nothing organized in terms of tourism at that point. So, it's really exciting for us to be celebrating that we have three teams that are actively working on things. Right now, all eyes are pointed toward the eclipse, which is on August 21st this summer. All of our communities lie within the path of totality. And the latest numbers we've heard is that they're expecting 100,000 to 200,000 visitors on our side of the mountains, 700,000 to 800,000 on the other side of the mountains. So, we know we'll have an influx of people, we don't know for sure what that will look like, some of that's weather dependent. So, right now, in particular, our marketing team and our River Fusion 22 team are busy working. River Fusion 22 is the name of the first ever multi-location, multi-day event that we're doing to celebrate our region, to showcase our area to visitors, to increase spend for our local businesses and organizations, and to hopefully give our event presenters enough of a positive experience that they'll want to continue doing River Fusion 22 in the future. And that was, that festival, to tie all of our communities together, was a direct outgrowth of the rural tourism training that we had last spring. And the, I can explain the name if you want, but I think it's kind of self-explanatory. So, the group agreed to launch that festival the weekend of the eclipse, and that's why so much energy is being pointed toward that weekend. So, since then, we've had 19 of our people in our region attend the inter-agency meeting that Travel Salem pulled together. This is really important because it gives us all the updates from the Ag Department, from emergency management, from law enforcement, from ODOT, from all the people about the kinds of logistics to expect. The name that the marketing group has chosen for our area is North Saniam River Country to kind of tie us all together and give us that hometown country feel. The teams have finished the local development, some of the preliminary logistical work that needs to be done for that weekend. The marketing team is working on gathering data for printed materials and things like that. This is a brand-new event for us, and it's a brand-new event for a lot of the people who are participating in it. So, we have less than 100 volunteers, somewhere between 50 and 100 people, all working on something, a lot of them brand-new at this. So, it's a little bit like herding cats sometimes, but I'm really impressed with the amount of work that people have been able to accomplish. We held our first group meeting on February 27th between the event producers and these tourism teams. We just had another one earlier this month, and we'll continue to have those before the eclipse. This is a really good opportunity for us to see how we're collaborating with each other, and so far, we're doing pretty well. One of the things that's come up recently for us, and you've seen the headlines probably, is this idea that there's no camping left available during eclipse weekend. And we actually have a lot in our area. So, the marketing group is pitching themselves a little bit differently now about escape to our area, get off the hot concrete, come and be out in the woods, and be on the river, and be on the lake, and spend your time with us that weekend. We have camping available at Sublimity Harvest Festival Grounds Camp to Lowly. Their cabins are full, but they have RV and tent camping available. And the two other groups that are connected to us but not part of River Fusion 22, the Silver Falls Conference Center still has camping available, their cabins are full. And then Bailey's Beads, which is residential adult and family pirate adventure camp, up the Little North Fork on the upward-bound grounds, has plenty of space also. And then the City of State has some RV camping sites, and so does the United Methodist Church. So, I wanted to put that on record because we do have lots of places for people to stay if they want to come there. So, and this focal point is helping all of these teams really learn how to work together and gel with each other. Travel Salem is a huge partner with this in this. Maricela Guerrero, who is the head of the Destination Development Team, is involved in the River Fusion 22 group. And DeHendricks and Irene Bernards, especially DeHendricks, have been involved on the marketing team, and now that team is meeting every couple of weeks. That's what's, we can talk about the events that are happening that weekend, from total eclipse of the Cobb at the corn festival, to blackout in Detroit. If you'd like to talk further about that, we can do that. The other couple of projects we've been working on that I think are really important, one is launching a community-based lending program, and we have partnered with Community Lending Works. In April, we just had our first meeting. We had some people there who were looking at getting funding for their businesses. They specialize in folks who are not yet bankable and with startups. So, we're, that's a really interesting opportunity for people who may not need a lot of money to get a business started, but who may not be able to get that from somewhere else. So, we're excited about that, and we'll continue doing more with them in the future. And then the other big piece that we've been working on is our youth engagement program. And we've been working with these very delightful freshman kids in Mill City. We've used that as a pilot project. This is a high school that does not have an Aspire program, so they don't have regular adult mentorship outside the classroom. So, we brought in 13 different speakers between mid-January and mid-March to come in and talk about their career paths. Their really great decisions, and the really not-so-great decisions they made and what they learned from those, the kinds of attitudes and perspectives that have helped them be successful in their lives, and the kinds of things they look for in employees. And what we noticed with these kids throughout this period, that even the kids who are considered at-risk or marginal, became more and more engaged as time went on. They were very interested, their retention of the material that they were learning was much higher than we expected to be by the end of that period. And then this next phase is taking them on some smaller customized field trips based on their career interests. And that's the piece that we're working on right now. Very happy about that. And then the Almsville program, for which we're a fiscal sponsor, that's Almsville Partners in Education, that started as their summer reading literacy camp, has expanded year-round with Almsville Elementary participating. United Way has decided to continue funding them for one more year and perhaps beyond. And they're, we're reshaping the program just a little, and by, we're the, we're the moral support and the fiscal sponsor. The real genius behind this is Laura Hoffman at the City of Almsville and the park board there. And we're changing the metrics up a little bit so they can more adequately measure third-grade literacy and also kindergarten readiness. And you'll see more of that. And then one of the other things that we participated in, in this first quarter, that a lot of people got huge value out of, was the Mid Valley Rural Conference that the Commissioners and Economic Development Advisory Board put together. And the idea that has had the most attraction and excitement is this tiny business village concept that came out of Tynnesta, Pennsylvania, where you're using small garden sheds as a really inexpensive way to do business incubators and create an attraction for visitors. That's, that's a lot of stuff. So, what would you like, anything more that you'd like me to share?
Questions or comments?
No, I just always enjoy hearing all the things that you're involved with, and the comments about the eclipse, we've been having some discussion, it's interesting, the sheriff is here this morning, about the public safety plan for that, and with all of that influx of people, how we're going to keep order with all of that. So, your numbers are pretty striking.
Well, and that, those don't come from me. They, I mean, they change all the time, right? But, I will, this is one thing that was important that we heard recently, is for our vet producers to use walkie-talkies and not rely on cellphones that weekend because it may be very difficult, which means a lot of marketing platforms that rely on social media may not be working either. So, we're having to adjust our plans as a result, and everybody's trying to find their kids' old walkie-talkies.
Commissioner Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Allison, thank you for the work you're doing in the canyon, really appreciate it. A couple of things, I think Commissioner Carlson just pointed this, I know the sheriff is trying to organize a, more of a public safety, you know, with, with the groups, and it'd be interesting to try to maybe reach out and invite some of the key leaders that, these community leaders, that they could hear those things and be a part of that, because it's going to take more than just our law enforcement to make sure everybody stays safe. So, we can loop you into that. And then the other thing, I really appreciate the North Saniam River Country, because I keep trying to refer it to as the North Saniam River Canyon, because everybody leaves the river out. They say the North Saniam Canyon, and there's something about describing a river that changes the picture of where you're going. So, I really like the North Saniam River Country as a, as a theme that you're, you're going with. How are you communicating the vacancies that you've listed here, that you talked about, with Travel Salem and people that are trying to say, hey, I want to, I still want to come, but where do I stay? How are you doing that?
It's a great question. For, for this summer, really for going forward, Travel Salem is our destination marketing organization here. They are the keepers of all information related to the eclipse right now, they're the go-to place in our area. So, and Angie can speak more to this when she's up here, but they have, there's a landing page for the eclipse. Just in the last week, we moved up to the top, or Dee has moved up to the top of that landing page, that we still have lodging available. That's not just here, that's also Pope County, and other places in Salem that have lodging. And then there's a whole list that's updated every week so that people know where to go. And then we've had a little bit of media contact, we'll have more of that going forward.
Okay, you may want to reach out to Del Aabra and their website, too, because they have, they could link back to Travel Salem and, and promote those things to help people find places to go. And then the last thing I was going to ask you, you have a joint meeting of the River Fusion 22 Action Team, and it says, "Early in May."
Yeah.
Has that follow-up meeting happened yet, or when is that?
We just had it.
Okay.
We had it, we did it outside, at Pioneer Park in Stateon, and we had representation from all of the event producers who were going to be there. Del Aabra is quite involved in this, and I want to thank them publicly. They offered the second half of the cash match that we needed for a Travel Oregon matching grant, and we'll hear officially about that in the next few days. And we wouldn't have been able to, to do that, this is to help pay for signage and print materials and things related to that weekend.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Allison, I just can't, I can't pass it up. Howling at the moon, really?
Yes.
Well, I was thinking about, I believe John Latimer should be invited. He says, yeah, he says that's just like trying to advise commissioners, it's
There we go.
Perfect. You got the technique down.
Or a bird in a cage.
Yeah, same deal.
It'll be a very fun block party in Stateon on Friday night, that weekend.
I have to think about that. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anything else? Good job. All right, our next is Economic Development, too. Travel Salem Third Quarter Report. I'll say this, congratulations on a name change, and I know what that means, however, go ahead and reintroduce yourself.
Okay, I'll do that. Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Angie Aniuuchi with Travel Salem, President and CEO. Always a pleasure to come see you in the mornings. So, I'm here to follow up that wonderful report by Allison and talk more about tourism specifically, what Travel Salem's working on. So, you should have in front of you the quarterly report that I turned in, and I'd like to just hit some highlights there. And then I also handed out a few extra pieces for you, for you this morning, that I'll review with you briefly as well. So, the third quarter for us is January, February, March activity, and during that period, we had significant public relations exposure, 251 published articles and a reach of about 7.5 million, and an advertising equivalency of 290,000. So, if we had to actually purchase that advertising or promotional space, it would have cost us almost $300,000. But we have a dedicated PR person that you helped us hire many years ago, and these are the outcomes from that. Our visitor information network, which includes all of the locations listed there in front of you, served about 37,000 visitors in that third quarter. And on the marketing side, we published some advertising, we did a banner ad with the Northwest Travel, you can see that on the right-hand side there. That's our old look. Our new look is on the bottom, and I'll hit that in a second. Our booking engine, which is new this year on our website, where visitors can actually book hotels and attractions and buy tickets directly on our website, that was in an effort to capture the visitor at the time of the decision and not direct them off of our site somewhere else to make that purchase. We wanted to do it when they're ready to buy. So, we've been working really, really hard to launch that, it's been very complicated, has to do with online travel companies such as Expedia and TripAdvisor and all those. We're kind of in competition with them, and so how we organize the structure of our booking engine and the competitive rates that our lodging partners are able to offer, we're kind of in sync finally. And so, we had almost $9,500 in room nights sold during that period, so, and we're starting, continuing to see that increase. We are running a Google AdWords campaign that resulted in about 12,500 click-throughs, and in February alone, it was 123% increase in exposure. So, that's driving people who type in a search word, recreation, or bed and breakfast, or best burger in, in Marion County, and then it directs them to our website and our resources. So, that's what the Google AdWords campaign
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
Best Burger, I think he's probably hitting that key a lot.
[laughing]
Where is the Best Burger? Sorry.
I don't think I should say, but it's right near the airport, but anyway, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, Flight Deck?
No.
No?
I know what he's thinking.
Oh, you do know?
And they have good curly fries, too.
And Flight Deck is fine.
You'll have to share that with me later. And so, this Google AdWords campaign is having direct results with the traffic, the overall traffic to our website, and the unique users was up significantly during that period, 35% up in January, 108% up in February, 105% up in March. And so, that's directly tied to the Google AdWords campaign and some of our social media work, which I'll touch on in a second. We also assisted with scouting locations for a movie producer who's doing the second version, Haunting at Silver Falls 2. You can see, did I put an image in here? I didn't. But yes, this is number two in that series, and we're working with them on locations. We did a number of desk-side tours this last quarter, and we have not been able to participate in these in the past. We just haven't had the financial bandwidth or the staff bandwidth, and we've been able to do several of them. And that third quarter was very productive. We were in New York City in January, where we were pitching Salem's yoga and beer and wine as a draw. And we participated in the New York Times Consumer Trade Show with a Willamette Valley booth in that one. We were also in Seattle in March and San Francisco in March as well, with desk-side tours. So, meeting with editors, reporters, influencers, to get our stories placed and pitched in their medias, targeting their audiences in those locations. We, I don't know if I mentioned this previously, but recently, in that third quarter, the Willamette Valley was named the 2016 Wine Region of the Year by Wine Enthusiast Magazine, and that is the premier wine publication in the world, and they called out Willamette Valley as a place to be. So, that's a huge designation. We have been leveraging that in all of our marketing and PR, so the visitor is aware of the award-winning products we have here. The ad at the bottom of that page that says, "Yes, that is our new look, our new campaign that we've rolled out," and that ad was placed in the Travel Portland Visitors Guide. Under Sports Marketing, you can see a lot of activity that happened during the quarter. We were, we had softball on the ground here, wrestling, the Oregon School for the Deaf Basketball, Animal House Flyball, Oregon Latino Basketball, and sub-league Jiu-Jitsu. And we also attended the National Association of Sports Commissions Conference, which was held in Sacramento this year, and met with 23 sports event planners to try to get them to turn their attention to our market here and bring their event here. Now, on to some of the extras that I handed out to you. There is a sheet that looks like this, that has all of our social media and online results from that third quarter. And I don't usually go into depth with this for you, but I am going to do it because we're seeing significant movement in results, and I wanted to share that with you. So, on the, on the website itself, travelsalem.com, compared to last year's same period, our visits were up 72% from 177 countries versus 33,000 visits from 98 countries, significant growth. The unique visitors is up 76%, almost double. Our page views is up 46%. And then you'll see our average time on-site is going down. That actually is counterintuitive. That is actually a positive thing. We want to see that time on the site go down. That means we've organized content in an efficient, logical manner for the consumer to find exactly what they need quickly, so they're not having to dig around and, and drill down into the site. They're actually getting what they need and getting off, and hopefully making a purchase in between there. On the social media side, those are the statistics in the grid below there. We are focused on three primary channels right now, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, although we have other channels that you'll see that we're also using. But on Facebook, you can see the tremendous growth and acceleration we're having in Facebook. The followers are up 150%. The posts, which means how many posts we're, we're sharing and putting out there, is up 73%. And the more meaningful metrics on this are the engagements. So, how many people are liking those posts, commenting on those posts, and sharing those posts? So, that's up 340% to 99,000 so far this year. So, that's tremendous growth, and that's what we want to see. People are engaging with the content, are reacting to the content, are sharing it, and that's how we get momentum and lift. You can also see our video content, which we have actually been creating a lot of new content, but we're marketing it as well, which is what we're supposed to be doing, and that's up 9,500%. So, going from 339 views of our videos to 32,000. So, tremendous growth there. So, people are seeing what we have to offer here, and I think I mentioned in a previous presentation that the, the video view is the quickest call to action, the greatest way to get a visitor to actually make a decision to travel here. Instagram, you can see the statistics there as well, so tremendous growth there and in Twitter. So, excited about that. Some drilling down a little bit deeper is the second handout in that packet, which is a, one sheet that talks about the Family Friendly Influencer Tour. And so, this is something that we've wanted to do for years but haven't had the capacity to do. But we now have a full-time social media person who's doing all the work that I just shared with you, and that's why we're seeing the tremendous growth we are. But we're able to essentially bring in other experts from other markets who have tremendous followers and clout in the social media sphere, to come in and market, to market our area, to their stakeholders. So, this is an example of that. So, Megan Riston is from Portland. She's a freelance social media influencer and family travel blogger. She has about 52,000 Twitter followers and about 20,000 Instagram followers. We brought her in in February, and she and her three children visited 14 restaurants, hotels, and attractions in Salem, Silverton, Mount Angel, and Menville. She shared, this is astounding, she shared four photos on Instagram to 20,000 followers, resulting in almost roughly 3,000 engagements. Four photos, 3,000 engagements. Those are people liking, sharing, commenting on our content. So, we're leveraging her network to market our destination. And you can see the other stats there. She published an article on travelingmom.com featuring 15 of the same area attractions as well, and we're looking for future social media posts that will come from her, as well as another blog post. Some of the, the graphics that are there show the, the kinds of posts she was making. So, she talked about, she visited the Mount Angel Abbey, posted some things about that, the Oregon Garden. She enjoyed the German food in Mount Angel, clearly, and the Gilbert, AC Gilbert's Discovery Village, create a memory here in downtown and other places. So, that's how the social media actually works on the ground, and how it's driving our statistics and our ability to really engage one-on-one with consumers. The last handout I have in that packet for you is an update on the eclipse, and Allison already covered some of that content. I wanted to give you an overview of what we're doing, what we have been doing basically for the last two years to be ready for this monumental event coming up very shortly. So, I go over the events calendar that we have on travelsalem.com and how that's got all of, an RSS feed specifically regarding the eclipse included in it. We've met with all the different communities that are listed on here. Our website does have a landing page specifically for the webs, for the eclipse. We also have an eclipse newsletter that has 2,500 subscribers to it. We are publishing weekly and updating weekly the lodging available for the eclipse, and camping keeps coming on ground. I mean, it's, we still have new opportunities with camping coming online. We've ordered 10,000 glasses, eclipse glasses, we'll be selling 3,000 of those in our location, and then 7,000 have been purchased by other partners and will be available throughout the region. I talk a little bit about the River Fusion Project and how exciting that is, and that that was an outcome of the Rural Tourism Studio. There is an eclipse pod with the Downtown 365 Group, who's working on specific content and activities in the downtown area here in Salem. And then on the planning, public safety and sphere, a lot has been happening there, too. We have convened statewide meetings with Travel Oregon and, and all of the different factors that will be impacted by the eclipse, transportation, safety, sanitation, all of those things. And so, we compiled our eclipse event information on our Travel Salem event calendar into data sets. So, we did a little extra work to create these data sets, and then it was put into an ArcGIS map, which we published in April. So, this is not necessarily third quarter, but you need to know about it. The map will be used as a real-time assessment and planning tool by the City of Salem Emergency Management Department, the Oregon Emergency Management Department, and the Department of Homeland Security to do real-time assessment of what's happening on the ground here with the potentially hundreds of thousands of people coming here. The, apparently, there's a series on OPB right now, I don't know if you've heard it, but they're looking at individual communities that are on that path of totality here in Oregon, and they are predicting a million people coming to Oregon. I, you know, none of us know, none of us know what that number is. We've been saying 50,000 people here on the ground in our community, it could be more, it could be less, but it is significant, and the ability to keep those folks safe, medical support, sanitation, it's just really, really big. And your team has been great, we've been working with them for over a year and a half, and we're all doing the very best we can. So, anyway, that's just a little overview of what we're doing on the eclipse. And then I have a couple other things. The Visitors Guide, which I kind of packaged it all up for you, this hit the, hit the ground yesterday, so it's hot off the press. I would call your attention to pages two and three, which is the new look, the new brand of how we're marketing this community, our region. And if you move to page, let's see, eight and nine, you will see how we sort of highlight the wonderful assets of north, the north part of the region, which is Kaiser, St. Paul, Woodburn, Aurora, Hubbard, Jervis, and Brooks. Page nine is the east, eastern part of the region, which is Mount Angel, Silverton, State and Sublimity, Mill City, Gates, and Detroit. And so, we have sort of sample itineraries and ideas of what the hits and highlights of those regions are. On the next set of pages, there's a two-page spread on Detroit Lake. Now, that was actually purchased by community support from Detroit, who wanted a higher level presence in the Visitors Guide. They've done this for several years now, and they continue to really get results from that. that. And then on page fourteen is the south part of the county, so South Salem, Jefferson, Omsville, and Turner. So, the rest of the guide is divvied up in play, and what to eat and drink, and what to see and do, and where to go, and all of that. And it's a great publication. We do print one hundred and forty thousand of these, distribute them throughout eight hundred locations in Oregon, Washington, California, British Columbia, and then throughout the world as inquiries come in. So, it's widely distributed. And then the last thing is this little green passport. Looks like an actual passport, but this is the Salem Ale Insider Trail Passport. It highlights, I can't remember how many partners are in here, I think maybe twenty locations. And each one has an overview of the partner and a page for a stamp. So, as you visit these locations, you will get a stamp. And at the end of it, if you bring the passport in, completed to Travel Salem, you get a commemorative beer mug, beer glass. So, we're hoping that this will really take off and give us some credibility. We can compete with other beer or brew destinations like Bend. Bend's Ale Trail is infamous, and we're hoping to compete with that. These passports are on sale for five dollars apiece, and we, they have been flying off the shelves. So, we are really excited about this campaign, and it's being completely driven by social media, not only our channels, but the channels of all the partners in this, in this program. So, this isn't really January, February, March. It just landed, but there you have it. You get mine. I had to have one to talk through.
Did you say these were five?
Five dollars apiece, yeah.
I get to type, Ally?
No, you can't. I got this for you. I needed one to go through. Anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Angie, great presentation, as always, and the work that you and your board and your staff do is fantastic. I had a couple of questions.
Turn the mic off. I don't know if they picked that up, but great presentation, and the work that you and your staff do is fantastic throughout.
Thanks for repeating that for the...
Yeah, makes a real difference. Couple of questions. First one is, this is off the topic of anything you talked about. How are the wine plate dollars flowing?
Mm.
Are we good with that? Is that, or do we need to follow up with that?
We are good with that.
Okay. Can you just give us a sense how that impacts you and us?
Yep. So, I believe that so far, latest numbers, I think through March, are around thirty-three or thirty-four thousand plates sold to date. That's over a million dollars in revenue, new dollars generated for tourism promotion across the state. So, we get a portion of those dollars here. For this current biennium that ends in June, we've received about two hundred thousand dollars to market Marion Polk and Yamhill Counties. So, the money is flowing. It's doing really great work. It's given us a lot of new bandwidth to do what we have not been able to do before. So, it's, it's working great.
Good.
Yeah. Thanks for asking. And thanks for your support in making that happen, because you were a co-sponsor, and it would not have happened without your support.
But, but the chair keeps bending my plate every time. This morning again, it was bent, and I'm thinking, "You're doing it."
No, I'm not. I'm trying to tell you, you have...
It's like about ready to break.
Oh. You're number, you're number two, aren't you?
I'm number two.
Yeah.
Only because I wasn't the senator.
You can't have number two bent.
And then the last thing, this is probably more of a comment than as a question. The most Oregon part of Oregon?
Mm.
Isn't that great? That's just really a good job.
And that ad campaign, which I, I'm going to figure out another way to talk with you about that or share that with you at some point, and I don't know if I need to schedule another time to come back. I'd probably need maybe ten minutes. But we hired a company called Lookout Communications, and I shared it at the last board meeting. And we actually had her come in and present how we came up with this new strategy. Holly McPhee is the former brand manager of Travel Oregon. She was the one behind the Seven Wonders Campaign, and that was executed by Wyden and Kennedy. So, we hired Holly, who's gone out on her own, to do our campaign. And she hired two Wyden and Kennedy folks to do the work that you see before you. So, we had really the best of the best. Holly's previous life before Travel Oregon was the brand manager at Disney. I mean, this woman is genius. And we were so lucky to be able to have her work on our, our image here. So, that work is going to slowly start to take shape. We don't have enough funds to roll it out all at once, so we're going to see it kind of come to fruition in piece by piece. But we're really excited about it. It's upbeat, bold, very modern. It speaks very well to the Portland consumer, to the Seattle consumer. It was targeting our specific demographics and who we're wanting to go after, to draw here. Really excited about the vibe. Like you said, the most Oregon part of Oregon. It's just positive and beautiful and different, and we're really excited to, to get behind that. So, thank you.
Commissioner?
No, thank you so much. Really wonderful report.
I just have one little one. I'm trying to figure out under, says sports market, trying to figure out what EEI means. Do you know off the top of your head?
So sorry, of course. Estimated Economic Impact.
I see.
So, the dollars brought in by that specific group into the market.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, I should know those things. That's why I have to ask.
That's okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your report and all you do.
Thank you.
All right, our consent item is next. Commissioner Cameron?
Can I, can I? This is going to be really hard for me to do, so... Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. Under Finance, approve three bids to sell real property. Tax ID number R-13439, comma, number R-22972, and number R-76664.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's moved and seconded, approve the item wants three bids selling real property. Further discussion?
Did I reach perfection?
It's pretty close.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hooked on phonics, right?
They both put pressure on me this morning and did not screw it up.
In all favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. One action item this morning, a proclamation. We consider a proclamation that designates the weeks of May fourteenth to twentieth, 2017, as National Police Recognition Week in Marion County. Sheriff Jason Myers and Commander Eric Ladd. And Troy, where is he?
He's not here today. Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. Jason Myers, Sheriff. Commissioner Cameron, I hate to burst your bubble, but you missed the period on the end of that sentence.
I didn't want to bring it up.
Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. It was before you last week for Corrections Officer Appreciation Week, and now before you for National Police Recognition Week here in Marion County. Our law enforcement professionals perform a vital and important role in our community around public safety, and as you know, the job of law enforcement continues to expand in the roles and responsibility. And I'm very happy to say that our folks do an amazing job of being out in our community, protecting our community, and looking out for the vulnerable. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Ladd, our Enforcement Division Commander, to talk a little more.
Commissioners, good morning. And for the record, my name is Eric Ladd, the Enforcement Division Commander for the Sheriff's Office. I just want to talk briefly this morning about National Police Week, which was established in nineteen sixty-two and occurs each May to honor those who've lost their lives in the line of duty and to honor their surviving families. As you're aware, last week, the Oregon Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony was held at the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. And in two thousand and seven, our office added Deputy Keller Fredenberg to that wall. Keller remains a part of our family and will forever be remembered. The week is an opportunity to show our appreciation for the work our law enforcement professionals perform every day. While the job does involve investigating crime, making arrests, and other headlines that you see, oftentimes, it is the little things that go unnoticed in the headlines. This was never more present than in March sixteenth, when Deputy Matt Higgins was asked to check on a welfare of an elderly woman. Matt went to the home, spoke with the woman, found that she was hungry and could not recall when her last meal was. Upon looking around the house, Matt found that she only had a couple cans of green beans in the home. So, Matt called his supervisor, Justin Kenyon, and the two went to the store, bought some food, and returned back to the home. And while Justin was putting groceries away in the home, Matt cooked up some hamburger helper for her. And the story doesn't end just there. Upon hearing this story, our downtown staff, specifically Cassandra Holland, raised over two hundred dollars, purchased a microwave, and some additional groceries that were taken back out to the woman. Our staff then made arrangements with senior services, the Marion County, Marion Polk Food Share, to help her sign up with Meals on Wheels. And then in April, returned back out to her house for her birthday to have cake and ice cream with her. Those are the little things that happen with our folks that I don't think always make the headlines in major newspapers. While the risks of the profession remain high for law enforcement, they continue to serve because for them, the profession is a calling, and it's the little things that can make the biggest difference in our community. And as we continue through two thousand and seventeen, we remain grateful for the support given to us by our community. In closing, I would ask Marion County recognize the week of May fourteenth to May twentieth as Police Recognition Week. Thank you.
All right. Questions?
Just great that we have the opportunity to weeks in a row to honor the people that work in the Sheriff's Office in different capacities, and all of them risk life and bodily harm, and I think also emotional issues sometimes that happen in being involved in law enforcement or corrections. And just want to express my appreciation for all that they do.
All right. Could then maybe a motion?
Oh, you want me to make a motion?
If you would.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve this proclamation designating the week of May fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, as National Police Recognition Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's moved and seconded, approve a proclamation that designates May fourteenth to twentieth as National Police Recognition Week in Marion County. Any further discussion? And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and then let's go ahead and read that proclamation. Commissioner Cameron, would you begin?
Sure. Before the Board of Commissioners of Marion County, Oregon, in the matter of proclaiming the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, Police Recognition Week. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand and seventeen, proclaim the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, as Police Recognition Week. Whereas the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, has been declared National Police Week, and whereas all members of the law enforcement agencies within Marion County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and the freedoms of our citizens, and...
Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement professionals, and that members of our Sheriff's Office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by shielding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and...
Whereas the women and men of the Marion County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service now. Therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners in gratitude for the dedicated public service and sacrifice hereby proclaims the week of May fourteenth through twentieth as two thousand and seventeen as Police Recognition Week in Marion County. Right. Special activities? Did you get them all on?
Sergeant Parise will have a catered event next week, and we're still working out which days. We weren't happy to get an email over to yourself, so you guys can come out and enjoy. I think last year, we did Jackie's Ribs is what we had catered last week, or last year. And I think Don's got a new place that he's found.
All right.
When I'm going to the jail tonight for the, the Corrections people for dinner, I think it's at eight-thirty.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
I have dinner inside.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I may have to list that. I will try to be there. We're not, it's not noticed that way. Can't let you have all the fun.
Well, there's a lunch today. I think there was like four options.
Yeah, there's a lunch today from eleven to one.
And then there was a dinner two nights in a row, so...
And that's, wait, is that in the jail this evening? Is that?
Uh huh.
Oh. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, as always. Well, Tammy, did you have anything for us?
John, John said that they might not let me out.
Oh, is that?
That's the problem.
All right, that is the end of our items on agenda this morning. Last thing is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant, forty-nine ninety-eight River Road North in Kaiser. And that's followed at nine-fifteen with Planning Commission candidate interviews, nine-fifteen to eleven. At eleven-thirty on Thursday, the eleventh, Raising the Bar for Oregon Luncheon at Salem Alliance Church, Cedar Hall, five-fifty-five Gaines Street Northeast in Salem. Monday, eight-thirty to nine, Calendar Review, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, five-fifty-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed immediately by Management Update, also in Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the sixteenth, ten to eleven, a Service District Meeting, present and approve budgets. Gee, the year's moving along. Seems like we just did that. Also Silverton Conference Room. Next Wednesday is our next regular board session. That'll be at nine o'clock here in the Senator Hearing Room, first floor, five-fifty-five Court Street Northeast. Wednesday, one to three-thirty, Northwest Senior and Disability Services, thirty-four-ten, Sherry Avenue, Salem, Large Conference Room. And that's followed from three to five with an Insight Board of Directors Meeting, Insight Boardroom, Suites Three-O-Five, Six-Twenty-Six High Street Northeast in Salem.
So, I have that meeting down as a Budget Committee meeting for Senior Disability.
Yes, are you on it or not?
Yeah, I'm on it, yeah.
And I think I filled in for you last year.
Last year, right, yeah. So, I think that was, I think there might be some confusion on that.
Well, you can go ahead and be there.
Yeah, right.
Be where? Where is it?
It's a budget review for the Northwest Senior and Disability.
Yeah, I saw the email, and, and I, you know, was kind of half-tracking it, and then I thought I'd ask somebody, so I'm asking now.
All right. I'll plan on you being there.
All right.
All right, anything else this morning? Covered it all?
This is really...
You want to go out and use that passport, don't you?
Well, yeah, I'm going. In fact, I'm going to go buy a couple.
All right.
I know people that would love to do that.
All right, I have nothing else, so with that, let's call this meeting adjourned.